Hey, good morning. Welcome to Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Agenda Setting Work Session for Tuesday, October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. It's nine oh four A M. My name is Time Minister, Chair of the Board. My left Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fornier, on Zoom Commissioners Carolina Mahia, Rachel Grant, and Julie Klaus. We have County Manager Leonard Hernandez. Assistant County Managers Jennifer Walker and Josh Cummings, Clerk of the Board Amy Davis. First up this morning is to review the first review of next week's business meeting agenda for October twenty-first. If Commissioners will pull that forward, just as an advisement, this meeting is recorded and posted to the YouTube channel within twenty-four hours. Written public comment may be received up to two hours in advance of the meeting and distributed to the board. Actually, may be taken at this meeting. So we have all the order to pledge allegiance led by District Four, that's Commissioner Fornier, land acknowledgement approval of agenda, and then two proclamations, one for Flood Awareness Week and one for Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
Yes, good morning Commissioners for Flood Awareness Week. We will be joined by Kyle Fusad of Emergency Management. He will be speaking to the importance of Flood Awareness Week. And for Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we will have a representative from the Susan K. Coleman.
I'm delighted consent.
Consent, so there's one speaker.
One speaker, and then we just move it forward. Any questions for the clerk on the proclamations? Okay, a public comment and then County Manager update. Anything predicting?
Um, there's a report out I'll give on a public works, I think it was dandelion planting day. Is that it?
Uh, the Ralph Monroe fail, there was some.
Daffodil.
Daffodil.
Didn't even register. That was there.
I'm still learning about my update chair.
It's a good one. Daffodils, yes. The county was there in different capacities.
There's some really cool pictures we'll share.
Yeah, it's cool, cool. All right. Um, sent items, we have one through twelve. Item one, setting a public hearing on the Black Lake Quarry rezon land use amendment.
Yeah, good morning Commissioners, Ashley O'Leary, CPED Director. So the first two consent items are part of CPED's annual rezon package. So property owners can go ahead and submit proposals to change the zoning um, and the comprehensive plan designation for their properties. So the first one is for property that we refer to is Black Lake Quarry Little Rock, so it's currently being used as a mine. And so they're looking to change the zoning of that property to allow expanded industrial uses. Um, and then the second one is for a property on Martin Way. There is a briefing scheduled tomorrow to dive into the details of this. Um, I will highlight that this is part of the Board's one severe um, decision on comprehensive plan docket items, which is why I want go ahead and schedule a public hearing and then have a briefing with you tomorrow. We can have follow-up work sessions after that hearing before you have to make any decisions. This will get bundled with a comprehensive plan update. Happy to answer questions at this point.
So the timing, I think, is excellent where more gets to hear the full package, then we'll have the public hearing. So you'll hear from constituents about the two rezon requests, and then after that, you'll have an opportunity to discern and decide. So thank you, Ashley, for all the setup leading up to this, and the timing, I think, is well done.
Okay, uh, today is really just a burp. Today is just sort of looking at the proposal to set the public hearing for November twelfth. Sounds like we're gonna have a chance to ask questions on the specifics tomorrow. Is there anything the Board needs to address this morning about the Commissioner Klaus? Commissioner Klaus, go ahead. We can't hear you if you're speaking.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I don't know what was going on with my settings, but just a quick timeline question. Um, are we gonna be asked to make a decision after the hearing on the twelfth, or will there be any more time after that hearing?
There will be time. Um, the decision is tentatively scheduled for December sixteenth for everything on the comprehensive plan docket, and so that gives more than a month to schedule any follow-up work sessions or have one-on-ones with staff.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I would just say, Chair, we do encourage Commissioners, if there's information that they would like CPED to work on or round up or provide they take advantage of Ashley's invitation to work with Assistant County Manager Ashley so that they can sit down and do that. We know that this is a very important and dense topic. I also want to thank Ashley and Derek Day, who's not here, for all of the briefings that they did publicly and at their own initiative to come before the Board and break those out, starting, what, two months ago, I believe. We started a marathon of coming through. So with all the work that you have going on, the changes you're doing on the personnel level, restructuring CPED, working on fees, um, along with everybody else's budget reductions exercises, thank you for your commitment and hard work.
All right, thank you. Next up is the same basically, uh, action item, public hearing for November twelfth on Martin Way. Land use and rezon, we just covered that. Same idea, any questions before I move to the next item? Two land use amendments proposed for potential consideration this year. Okay, number three is interlocal agreement and business agreement with the Thurston Mason Behavioral Health Administrative Services Organization. This looks like I T A expenses.
Morning.
Is this your item?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, Summer Miller, um, Budget and Fiscal Manager in the Commissioner's Office. Uh, this item is the interlocal agreement and business agreement with Thurston Mason Behavioral Health Administration Administrative Services Organization. According to state law, the Behavioral Health Administrative Services Office, the B H A S O, reimburses Thurston County for the cost of court services related to involuntary commitments, I T A. Uh, over the past years, the B H A S O has contracted independently with the Thurston County Superior Court, Thurston County Clerk's Office, Thurston County Prosecutor's Office, Thurston County Office of Public Defense, and four separate agreements during per to reimburse the actual costs associated with the I T A cases. Back in January of two thousand and twenty-four, the Commissioner's Office took steps to revise the I L A per R C W seventy-one oh five seven thirty, which requires counties to be reimbursed on a per-case basis with a rate that is calculated as the average of court services cost per case for the past three years excluding indirect costs. Uh, reimbursement on a per-case basis requires a single interlocal agreement, which is before you um, between the county and the B H A S O, which combines Thurston County Superior Court, the Clerk's Office, and the Prosecutor's Office and Public Defense. Our new rate for two thousand and twenty-five is established at one million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This contract does expire December two thousand and twenty-five, and we are committed rolling, uh, moving forward to a three-year rolling average, so we'll recalculate again in early two thousand and twenty-six. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions on this I T A contract? Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Have a great day.
Interlocal agreement with PACT Mountain Workforce Development.
Thank you, I'll take that one. Um, this is the interlocal agreement that establishes a legal governance framework for Pacific Mountain Workforce Development Council and its consortium of county partners. Updating the and executing the revised agreement is necessary to maintain compliance with the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act, the known as W O A, and ensure continued good standing with our oversight agencies. If the Board were to approve this, this will be circulated to the other member counties, which include five counties, Gray Harbor, uh, Lewis, Mason, Pacific, and Thurston, and they'll all sign off on that as well.
Questions on PACT Mountain?
Nope, thank you.
Next up, item five, advanced life support contracts.
Morning Commissioners, Ben Miller, Todd, Emergency Services Director. Um, this is in reference to the e-brief on September eleventh. Um, ALS contract negotiations were, I would say, very amicable between our three contract cities and districts. Uh, currently Thurston County contracts with Lacy Fire District Three, Tomwater Fire Department, and Olympia Fire Department of the City of Olympia and City of Tomwater uh, for paramedic-level services countywide. Uh, that's a fairly unique model throughout the country, uh, and with that, it's been a model that's been in place here since nineteen seventy-four. As of these last contract negotiations, we did negotiate a contract for the twenty-sixth through twenty-twenty-eight time period. Uh, there were no changes to overtime structure, no changes to recertification funding, but it did increase some funding for paramedic training. It did increase funding for a training officer in two thousand and twenty-seven and two thousand and twenty-eight. And overall, the contract costs did increase from a two thousand and twenty-five base of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in two thousand and twenty-six, four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars in two thousand and twenty-seven, and six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in two thousand and twenty-eight, all with a reference of the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-five value. That's a lot of twenties. Uh, with that, that's a roughly one point four percent increase, two point four percent increase, and three point two percent off of two thousand and twenty-five increase, uh, respectively. Um, this was a very collaborative conversation with all of our partners. Uh, they're currently running this process through their councils and district boards as well uh, in terms of that briefing, and I want to open it up for any questions you might have had from the briefing, uh, or I know that was a lot of numbers. If you have any questions over what was negotiated or the specific topics.
I've heard plenty of it, and you're doing a great job. Thank you.
Perfect. I should also call out that it was unanimously supported in the September meeting by the EMS Council.
Any questions for Ben? Just a comment, Chair, that the work that is entailed to negotiate this kind of situation and keep all the partners in a good place and alignment is significant. So special thanks to Ben because that in itself is a full-time care and concern each other's work.
Very much. Sometimes it's the item that just, you know, goes on the consent, nobody asks a question, and it's like reflective of how much like good work went underneath it.
Right, that is reflecting, you know, you know, really like that gets left over, so.
Yeah, by the time it gets to the end, that's where it should be. I think so. Yeah, that's the hope.
Or else you get public comments.
Thank you. All right, Amendment ten to the Washington State Department of Health Consolidated Contract.
Hello, Jennifer Haith, Director of Public Health and Social Services. This is a request to the Board to approve Amendment Number Ten to the Washington State Department of Health Consolidated Contract, providing an increase of seventy-five thousand four dollars for revised maximum consideration of ten million, three hundred and seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars for the duration of January one, two thousand and twenty-five through December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-seven. And this one simply adds a statement of work for the On-Site Sewage Land Management Plan, L M P, implementation program that was effective July one, two thousand and twenty-five. I can answer any questions, Rachel.
You repeat that onsite land management?
Yes, it's the O S S, On-Site Sewage, and then L M P Land Management Plan.
That's different than what we're gonna be talking about in Port of Health, for example.
This is that.
Oh, it is that?
Yes.
So it's help-funded that work?
It's a continuous, yeah, funding of that work.
Okay. Any questions for Judge Haith? We'll hear more about this this afternoon.
Yep, yep.
Okay, thank you. Uh, you're still here for item seven. Couple more. Okay, next up is, uh, item seven, contract with South Puget Sound Habitat for Humanity, thirty-nine hundred Boulevard.
Yes, this is a request for the Board to approve a contract with South Puget Sound Habitat for Humanity for their thirty-nine hundred Boulevard Road development for the amount of two million, one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, as recommended by the Regional Housing Council. South Puget Sound Habitat for Humanity applied to Thurston County Office of Housing Homeless Preventions, R F P, for affordable housing capital projects in February, two thousand and twenty-five. Habitat's application included a request for funding to support this development, and when fully complete, the thirty-nine hundred Boulevard Road development will include a hundred and twelve new units of affordable housing for homeownership, and I have Alex Purse here to help answer any questions.
How many units did you say?
Hundred and twelve.
Questions for Alex? Next up, contract with South Puget Sound Habitat for Humanity, Critical Home Repair.
Governor, this was another R F P request for in the amount of a hundred thousand and recommended by the Regional Housing Council. And this application included a request to fund the to support their critical home repair program, which provides critical home repairs to low-income homeowners at little to no cost.
I think I asked this in a previous meeting, but like, these are like, there's a decision-making process, and then, but like, these are the contracts that kind of result from the decisions, once they have to be kind of fleshed out and.
Yeah, so we came to you to approve all the awards back in June, mid-June, um, for all of our affordable housing, and now we're coming back to you for permission to execute the contract.
Okay, so these are consistent with decision-making we did in June. Any questions for the team? All right, thank you. On that one, then let's go to number nine. Uh, Public Health and Health Services set a public hearing for two thousand and twenty-four consolidated annual performance and evaluation report, which I know they call it CAEPER.
Correct. A request for the Board to set this public hearing for November twelfth at three thirty P M or soon thereafter to receive public comment on the two thousand and twenty-four Housing and Urban Development Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, yes, CAEPER, uh, which is an annual summary report explaining how the federal Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnerships Program, Home Funds, were expended in the program year of two thousand and twenty-four, and it is a HUD requirement. And again, Alex Purse, any questions?
Questions on CAEPER, we're just starting a public hearing for November twelfth to add on with our land use amendment issues, but we don't usually get too much of comment on CAEPER. Never know. Any questions? No, thank you. Sheriff's Office is next with Washington Traffic Safety Commission grant for DUI enforcement.
They're working on joining.
Okay. We had one of these already. Um, I guess is they got another, some kind of extension or additional, but the same words.
Should we come back to it when we get on?
Yeah, we can come back. Let's go to item eleven, voucher list. Any questions? There's about item eleven and twelve are vouchers for August twenty-fifth and September twenty-second.
That voucher list also needs the, we believe it might need the sheriff to speak to it. There was a request from a Commissioner asked meeting, have this question. Unless there are no questions, we can also come back to that.
Don't we have a?
There is that board briefing tomorrow.
Oh, yeah, we have a board briefing tomorrow, so that's why, I think that's responsive to the Commissioner's question.
Yes.
And then if there's something pops up, we have to address the voucher, we can do that. Okay, so let's go to, um, Department Item one, uh, six, one, Community Planning Economic Development, setting a public hearing on the permit review process annual code update.
We thank Commissioners, Ashley Rice, CPED Director. It really is the CPED season in the boardroom. Um, so this is a request to set a public hearing for the permit review process annual update. Um, there was a need briefing sent on September tenth, and we have had a briefing on this, um, September twenty-fourth. Um, this package, a development code amendment, so this is different than the comprehensive plan docket. The Board can make decisions on development code amendments throughout the year. It just so happens that this is sort of moving along the same timeline as the comprehensive plan docket items. Um, but this package includes general clerical edits, updates to the permit review timelines to comply with state law, amendments to State Environmental Policy Act categorical exemption thresholds, that's a mouthful, but that's also to be responsive to changes in state law, um, to remove barriers to housing, as well as hearing from the public, um, their thoughts on whether the Board remains in the appeal process for land use applications or not.
And I believe this was submitted as a consent item, since it's just a set of public hearing, but it's currently on the Department Items, the staff could go either way.
So the let the appeal issue, even though Planning Commission voted it down, it's gonna be on?
The Board.
For public here, for public comment.
Yeah, so the the Board gave direction to staff, um, at the September twenty-fourth briefing to go ahead and keep it in the package so that you could hear comments and then make a decision on whether to move forward with it from there. It can either remain in the package or be taken out at the Board's direction.
And then, as to Josh's point, is there a reason to put it on Department Item?
Um, I believe that when we, I believe that when we did our chair by chair review, it was thought that it might be good to move it, but we can always move it back.
I can't remember what I, I might have said that, but I don't remember why. Did anybody have any strong feelings about it?
It's just setting a public hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Commissioner Klaus?
Thank you, Chair. I would like to keep it on Department Items. If we already have other CPED items, it shouldn't hopefully be an issue, but seeing as there was pushback at the Planning Commission level and we're setting a public hearing anyways, I think it might be a good idea to keep it on Department Items, just to give that small introduction.
Sure. Okay, well, there you go. So we'll keep that there, and then we'll go to item two, resolution to increase land use and building fees to achieve full cost recovery for permitting services.
Yep, we actually have a short presentation that Ashley and Josh worked on.
We'll try to keep this brief, because I know you still have agenda items to cover.
This is information that the Board has seen.
It was sent out, um, previously. So I just wanted to highlight for the Board that our fees are broken down into two buckets. Uh, what you'll see up there on that screen are, the blue bucket contains our building permit fees, and so that covers everything from reviewing plans for single-family homes to inspections for fire, mechanical plumbing, um, and that really, those fees are in place to ensure that um, buildings meet all life and safety requirements. Um, the second is our planning fees, and so that really is the bucket for all of our environmental reviews, land divisions, site plan reviews. It also includes things like applicant-initiated rezones, like the ones we just covered and set public hearings for. So our current permit fee structures, um, I I will note that this table up here, this was sent to us by Kitsap County, so they do an independent review of building permit fees. And when this got sent to us over the summer, started scratching my head, like, why are we so much lower than all of the other counties cited in their study? Um, if you look at the average across all the other counties, we're sixty-eight percent lower than the average for the cost of our base building permit fees, and these are, these are based on a two thousand square foot home. Um, when we dug in, we realized that our our building permit fee structure is indexed to a two thousand eight building valuation tool. The building valuation tool is something that is independently created by the International Code Council. It's not something we come up with. But we essentially indexed ourselves in the last big update to our fees in two thousand and nine. We're using two thousand eight building valuations, and they just haven't kept pace with the costs of any of our plan reviews, and that's why we're so much lower than all the other counties. We also dug into the state's new guidance. They released, um, a new guidance document um, with their new permit review timelines on what full cost recovery looks like for land use, um, land use applications, and realized, you can see the list up there, um, that there were a number of services that we're offering in in CPED, um, that we're not charging for, but that we are fully capable and it's lawful to charge for these services, um, with the state's new guidance. And so that that includes everything from project consultations to our public outreach services, and we have to hold open houses for projects that have more robust environmental reviews, any of those rezones or code amendments that an applicant initiates rather than the Board, um, as well as mitigation for permit-exempt wells and permitting software. So the proposal that we have before you in light of the budget deficit, um, that in the reduction target that CPED is facing is a full cost recovery model for our fees. So updating our permit review fees to achieve that full cost recovery. What that looks like, because we have those two different buckets, um, is a modernization of the fee structure. So on the land use side, it's adding new fees for services we already provide. It's also transitioning to a one-time upfront fee structure. Right now, we essentially charge, um, a deposit, and then we bill folks hourly for the time it takes, um, to review their permits. We've heard a lot of feedback about that, um, that folks really want to know how much it's gonna cost upfront, so we are gonna shift to an upfront um, fee model, which will be a benefit to our applicants. And then on the building side, we're we're proposing to index to two thousand and twenty-five, like all of the other jurisdictions you saw on that table, as well as the cities in Thurston County. You'll also see it's gonna come a little bit later, just because we have to set up a separate fund through financial services, but collecting funds specifically for stream flow mitigation projects, these projects cost millions of dollars, and we're not collecting any fees for that. We've been really fortunate to get grants to do feasibility analyses for these projects, but as soon as we get into construction and then long-term maintenance of them, there's no funding for it. So we are looking at charging more for our permit-exempt wells and then putting that money in a dedicated fund just for stream flow restoration. And then finally, for our technology fee, shifting to a new permit software system is is comes with cost. Um, a lot of the other jurisdictions we looked at, including the ones you saw on that chart, um, have technology fees. Most of them range from three to ten percent. When we looked at the contract that we already have with a seller, um, a five percent fee should be enough um, across the board to support the maintenance and ongoing cost of that contract. So by the numbers, um, it's a lot of words that I just shared, conservative projections, I'm looking at the last three years of all the applications we've taken in um, indicate that we'll get at least a million dollars, um, in additional permit revenue into our enterprise fund for two thousand and twenty-six, and that would just grow in the out years. What that means for us, being able to maintain a level of service and continue the improvements that we've been working so diligently on in CPED, is retaining ten permit review staff. Um, and with with those ten staff, we not only hope to maintain levels of service, but improve them, um, over time, especially once a seller comes online. We've got the resetting the floor for the building valuation data from two thousand and eight to two thousand and twenty-five, so that's seventeen years. We're doing seventeen years of catch-up, so it's gonna seem like a much bigger impact than it is if we were just doing incremental increases. And I don't want to shy away from highlighting what this means for the building community. You will see base, or our builders will see base building permit fees for a two thousand square foot home increase from about twenty-six hundred to thirty-nine hundred. But just to go back to that chart, even at thirty-nine hundred, we would still have base building permit fees that are less than six of the other counties shown on this chart.
And you're effectively updating by next year, it'll be eighteen years lag in bringing it forward.
Yes. That's a long time. It's a long time. And the way we've written the resolution is that it will just go up with the building valuation data from here on out. We won't create these big gaps. Um, so it won't take another eighteen years to look at our permit fee structures.
Can you talk a little more about that? What does that mean, building valuation data?
Um, so the International Code Council, um, independent, um, organization that supports the building community, they essentially look at cost of building a home, and they make adjustments to the building valuation. It can go up or down. It doesn't always go up. Um, but it does capture the, you know, the inflationary cost and whatnot of building a home. They have a big chart that they produce, and then essentially our building permit fees are indexed to that chart.
So it'd be like a C P I, but related to the building industry.
Mm-hmm.
And then you've structured it to where if that goes up by four percent, fees go up by four percent, something?
Yeah, it's not a direct, it's complicated. It's not a direct relationship, but essentially, yes, you would just see if the building valuation data changes, then the building permit fees reflect that and would also change. It's not a a straight calculation, but they are indexed.
Implementing this, though, would alleviate the, um, subsidizing that's occurring right now, or significantly reduce the subsidizing that's occurring right now from the general fund to this.
Yes, it would allow us to shift a million dollars off of the general fund because we'd be able to actually cover the costs of our our staff salary and benefits using our permit, permit review enterprise fund. So, okay.
Well, I was just curious when, because like, when you were going through the bullets of things that we don't charge, you said applicant-initiated rezones.
Mm-hmm. We charge a very, very small amount. We charge a very, very small amount and we get about ten to fourteen percent cost recovery on applicant initiated rezones.
Time and effort that goes into the back and forth on these, we found is not nearly uh what they pay in the P upfront. Staff time, the open houses, the public outreach.
Yeah, like we had four planning commission work sessions on each of the rezones that yours that are before you. We held open houses and that's the level of service our community desires. And yet we're not getting any of the cost recovering analysts.
That's the subsidy.
So I understand that, I guess my question is, that seem, I mean, what? That seems like a huge nu- potential number. I'm actually almost surprised that one million is like if you're, I mean, I guess it depends on how many of those in an average in a year. I mean, like you're saying this year we had two of them, that's it?
We have two this year.
Be subject, or there are other things you're working on that would be subject to these potential recovery fees?
Our holdings is not moving forward this year, but that is one that would be subject. And then any new applications we we get that are applicant initiated.
Yeah.
And for those folks who, you know.
Could that look like in a, on a case?
In terms of how how many or how much money?
Like, like, like an average, I mean, I know you're, I'm just asking you a spitball, like, but an average like land use rezone type, like, like the ones we're looking, that you just mentioned, would be like, what, three hundred thousand dollars of staff time or?
No.
Thousand dollars of staff.
I would say in the thirty to fifty thousand dollar range, depending on how complicated it is.
Including all that's, all those open houses and planning commission meetings and reviving by now reviews and whatnot.
And if it, if it's an EIS, that that number goes up, but this is, these are the applicants, property owners, receive a significant return on investment. That's something I learned working in the private sector through a land use amendment rezone. And they should approach it like very critically in terms of, you know, is it really going to meet the criteria? Um and, you know, not just submit an application. They think it's a good idea.
Yeah, like they shouldn't just be like hail marying it and then we have a huge cost to 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 tell them, oh, it's not going to work. And then they just hail mary the next one, because if they could get one, then they make a ton of money off that. But are are all our hoops that we're creating required or are they just like, you know, you're saying we're having, you know, four open houses. That seems like a lot of open houses. Is there, is there a requirement for one? Is there a requirement for two? Are we just trying to, are we being extra?
So what, it was actually only one open house for planning commission work sessions. So once it's in the planning commission's court, they decide if they want to have an extra work session or not.
The planning commission is an extension of the board.
Yeah.
Looking to apply good recommendations. So if they ask for another session, we provide it.
Yeah, the the open.
Planning commission, I get that. I I thought I'd heard you say.
I apologize. One open house um per rezone application to give the community an opportunity to know more about it. And then, and then it it just goes into the planning commission process. We actually do them at the very front end of the project. So the planning commission can get as much information about community concerns before they start their discussions.
Thank you.
Any other questions about rezones?
And this is coming to the board at their direction in terms of realigning the fee structure.
So we know this is, it's tough. I don't think uh, you know, if you ask a builder, do they want fees to go up? No one's going to say, yes, please raise our fees. But we were thoughtful about developing a balanced approach that tried to deliver benefits to our applicants at the same time that we're increasing fees. We've been working hard the last year to try to deliver benefits in terms of just more predictability uh when you come in for permits. So in addition to, of course, I'm sorry.
Sorry to interrupt, actually, but what I will say is, it is um a good business approach to not wait eighteen or seventeen to eighteen years to update fees. So I appreciate you looking at this regardless of uh the county's budget situation. I think this has been expedited as a concept that um received board support because of the budget situation. But I do believe that you were already thinking down this line, we're going to be approaching. We can't be that far behind uh the other counties, because then as uh Assistant County Manager Jennifer Walker said, we are subsidizing um which those dollars from the general fund should go to other programs. Uh and still, we'll be under a majority of the counties um from a fee standpoint.
And in and out years, we'll see if, I mean, we're of course offering conservative projections at this point, but if they end up being one point five million or two million, we will look at lessening the general fund support um as as we see what this looks like um for twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty eight.
And creating value-added interaction and service levels, whether it's um expedited permitting review, enhancement to our computer systems uh and technology approach. There's a lot that Thurston County can and should be doing in this area. So we're excited that there's the leadership uh alignment around taking those steps and working with our development community. They um often have said uh to me personally, that time is money and that for them, knowing how long something's going to take, you know, and how much they have to pay for it is of great value to them.
And so that's, part of that balance is transitioning to that one-time upfront fee structure that does provide financial clarity and certainty for our applicants coming in for a land use application. Um we're also going to be working with both our planning and building groups um to develop an expedited permit option, which is another thing that we've been asked um over the last few years. Also offering project consultations. Um this is kind of a, right now we've got fifteen minutes at the counter or we've got a pretty expensive pre-submission conference for someone who knows exactly what they want to do. But those in-between steps were just trying to explore two or three different sites and just want guidance. Offering lower cost project consultations, so they get that more dedicated one-on-one time. Um we also.
To be fair, they get that dedicated one-on-one time now, but it's free and subsidized. Two to three hours at the counter where they just answer questions back and forth. So this would be that middle ground where we're able to recover those costs.
Um and for someone who doesn't want to wait forty-five minutes to sit at the front, sit and wait to talk to someone, they get to just schedule online and know that they can come in, pay thirty dollars and get thirty minutes with somebody. Um. And then another idea that just got thrown up by our building community that we're going to be exploring and hopefully implementing uh by January is coming up with special hours throughout the week at the building counter for submittal of new applications. So they don't get stuck in these long queues waiting for back and forth when they've got something to submit and a building, a building site to go off to.
I'm really excited about this because when, in this environment of impacts to service, et cetera, the alternative of just closing down the counter would be detrimental in this environment. So um Ashley is a director, working with her team, having enough time under her belt to look at these things to say, I think we can make some major enhancements here and to keep service moving forward and to even create value-added service in this process is something that's pretty exciting.
And finally, community outreach, we're all about community outreach in CPED. So we started these conversations with the building community oh, two months ago. Um so we do have some early feedback. Um you know, they do acknowledge that we have lower fees. No one's excited about fees going up, but there's an acknowledgement there that our fees haven't gone up in a really long time. Um they don't want to see a decreased level of service. Predictability is the most important thing to them. So any loss of staff that would mean less predictable permit review is really not something that they want to stomach. Um they express interest in the out years if we are seeing that our projections are higher um to have dedicated staff resources for housing reviews and even take a look at whether there are things we can do um through our permitting process to speed up housing. Um and of course, they are avidly um anticipating the launch of a seller. They use online permitting systems pretty much in every other jurisdiction and they just can't wait for us to catch up to this century. Um we worked on this in coordination with Summers team, very appreciative of her and her team, along with Public Works and Environmental Health, especially as it relates to the tech fees. Um and once we get a decision um from the board, the list up there is the outreach that we'll be doing in coordination with um Chief Communications Officer and through our Building Development Center. Any questions?
You know, this was a longer presentation for an item, but we're bringing this together because this item's on the agenda and we thought the board would appreciate and would benefit from this longer explanation. Thank you for your patience.
A lot of hard work going into this decision.
Any questions for Ashley? You're on.
All right, thank you. Yeah, so yeah, item three on this is part of what the presentation just covered, is the tech fee portion of the.
Separate resolutions that will be proposed related to this scheme.
Yeah, the, that, that resolution is separate because it does impact the funds for Public Works and Environmental Health as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And as Matthew said, the sheriff is here for coming back to this other item.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I'm just trying to find the item. It's item ten under consent agenda, Sheriff Sanders. We had uh Washington's Traffic Safety Commission grant for DUI enforcement.
Good morning. Uh yeah, really good news. I'm excited. Uh last year we put in for a grant um for this position. We didn't get it. The Traffic Safety Commission came forward and said, hey, as a consolation prize, would you like fifty thousand dollars in overtime? Uh we came before you guys this summer. Uh deputies and detectives ate that up. They did a ton of DUI enforcement. We're compiling the final data to present back to you guys to let you know how many DUIs they removed from the road. But it wasn't too long after we started that and just all of the social media outreach and and that much that this Traffic Safety Commission came back and said, actually, do you want the job? Um and we're like, yeah, we'll take that too. So this actually uh has, we've been working on this all summer long, but this is a um one-year grant. It covers the cost of an FTE for full-time DUI enforcement. Uh it does require a match, but we are, we already have a traffic unit, so we count as the match. So there's no, no general fund or public safety. Um I think this is coming at a good time to get it to restore any potential cut that we may have to our our field operations. Um and uh one piece of uh information that I think is important context here is that uh in the last ten years, Thurston County's had uh two hundred nineteen fatal crashes and fifty-six percent of those were alcohol or drug induced. So um the the impaired driving is a strong driver over whether or not you're going to be killed on our roadways is a, is basically kind of the bleak outcome. So the more of them that we can remove off the roadway, the better. Um and again, this is a a year-to-year grant, but they anticipate that all things going as they will, that the grant will be potentially extended. Um so this can be a multi-year partnership with the Traffic Safety Commission.
I I'm curious on like on DUI enforcement stuff, because I like in terms of I used to see uh a state patrol like downtown Olympia sometimes. Um and then, you know, the cities do what they do and now this, I mean, is is there, is it kind of ad hoc, just everyone kind of cobbles resources that they have, or is there some kind of coordination thing, like who's gonna, who's going to patrol downtown Olympia or where are you, where are you guys focused on your, you know, on your county, like as a sheriff's team?
Yeah, so our our patrol deputies, I mean, you'll you'll see them patrol all over the place. I mean, a good example is last night, they patrolled out unincorporated county and it was a ghost town. So they went to downtown Olympia and helped out on a burglary call, got took a chase and then went back to the, so there's a lot of cooperation. Um and most of the deputies and officers across the county and troopers are listening to each other's radios to understand if we need to shift resources somewhere. There's a big disturbance in downtown Olympia with shots fired. You're going to see a shift. Um but most of the time, I think people are just in their jurisdictions kind of doing their thing. As far as DUI enforcement goes, um one of the, it is trickier to get DUIs out in unincorporated county because there's less traffic. So when you want to get the most bang for your buck, you're going to go to the most populated area where there's the greatest likelihood that a bad collision is going to occur and you're going to find that impaired driver. Most of our bars are located in that Martin Way corridor. Um so you'll see a lot of the DUI enforcement is occurring on Martin Way corridor, um I five. And then State Patrol, we all have the Target Zero Grants as well. Um and on those nights, it's kind of the same thing. Um State Patrol does, obviously we have our own jurisdictions, but you'll see State Patrol driving through downtown Olympia. Really, all they're looking for is the wrong way driver on fourth Ave. That's a pretty good indicator that they've, they've found the person they're looking for. Yeah, 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 yep. So that's kind of how the traffic safety stuff goes, but you'll see deputies all throughout the, all throughout the county. And then also if there's like a DUI collision, then these units respond. They'll take the DUI portion, which frees up a deputy for three hours. Um so it's a pretty big win to have these extra units. Um throughout the entire summer, we had anywhere from two to three additional units working every Friday and Saturday night, which freed up patrol to go do other things.
Commissioner Claus?
Thanks Chair, thanks Sheriff for being here. Um I had a question about the match requirement. You mentioned um that this doesn't have an impact on the general fund or public safety tax. Is that because the amount that's required for the match is already budgeted? Could you just clarify that piece?
Yeah, so what the Traffic Safety Commission says is that we will give you a full-time DUI enforcement deputy if you also have a full-time DUI enforcement deputy doing, so they basically want the county to match the work. They don't require that you match new funding, if that makes sense. So for us, we already have a traffic team. So basically what we're doing is, and this was already part of our plan, whether or not we got the money or not, but part of the public safety tax, one of the new programs that we're starting up is a full-time traffic team. Across the county, probably the, the number one complaint I get is speeding, reckless driving, aggressive driving. So um right now, our traffic team is um a one commercial vehicle uh enforcement who also works with Public Works. So that position is funded through Public Works and he's in the construction zones uh basically at their will. Um so he just goes around and does whatever Public Works needs. Then we have uh two deputies who are currently working swing shift. Um and those are the two deputies who are doing like DUI enforcement, traffic enforcement, and they handle our collisions. They're also, they're reconstructionists. So they respond to you know, heavy intrusion, high damage collisions or um collisions where pedestrians are are hurt or killed, those kinds of things. And so um going into next year, our plan is to add two more deputies to that traffic team, because we're, we're getting really close to being fully staffed. And um at that point in time, we will have a traffic unit that is working just about three sixty-five, twenty-four, seven. There'll be a a small gap. Um and so what we'll be doing with this is that we already, those, all those deputies in that unit are already doing DUI enforcement. So it meets the requirements of the grant. Basically, what, what they put that clause in there for is that um if you're a really small department, let's say, and you don't have a traffic unit, they want you to add a resources to match. They're, they're trying to get the most bang for their bucks. They if you don't have a traffic unit doing DUI enforcement, they want you to put someone in that spot to work alongside the, the one that they're giving you.
Okay, perfect. That's, that definitely clarifies for me. I appreciate it. And then I guess my next question would be, you said that this is, there's a high likelihood that this would be a multi-year grant. If for some reason it is not a multi-year grant, like they award it to someone else or the funding runs out at the state level, would you have to then lay off the position that was funded through this? Or would you be, would your plan be to try to find funds somewhere else, public safety or somewhere else, to keep that position once they've been hired on?
I would say that if we end up in the spot where we have to lay someone off because this funding went away, it would be the best problem I could ever ask for. Because that means I have a hundred and fifteen filled commission positions throughout the agency and no one has ever left or retired. Uh we're just at the point, Commissioner, where we're big enough as an agency, there is always going to be some form of turnover. Um additionally, each year, we, we keep a couple vacancies in general fund because we don't have the budget to pay for retirement uh buyouts. So we always have some, some area where we, we, we always are going to carry a vacancy of some sort. Um you know, just going into next year, I know I have three retirements. I won't have, you know, an applicant right away to backfill. So if we saw this funding was maybe potentially not going to be restored, we would just hold a vacancy.
Commissioner Grant?
Good morning. Hey, I um, I might have missed this uh stat. I was distracted for a second, but did you um say what the increase you've seen so far since we started this out um uh in arrests have been for DUIs?
I don't have those numbers with me, but I can tell you they're much, much higher.
He's coming back with that.
I'll be coming back with that and I'll give you guys a a presentation, a short one on that, um just showing the the increase in arrests. But yeah, I mean, I would say most nights that those deputies were out there, they were making three or four DUI arrests a night. Um which is substantially higher than what you normally have. Because most of the traffic enforcement is just deputies in between nine-one-one calls if they have a a chance to break free and and go do some proactive enforcement or responding to like a DUI collision where the car is disabled. Um so to actually have a couple deputies who are, their only job is to go out and find the DUIs, I mean, they found them.
So on the other end of that, I guess my, my question is then have we, I, I guess I'd like to see if we've seen an increase in DUI court. Uh because of course, um I'm thinking, you know, if we're seeing an increase and we're adding additional officers to increase the number of arrests, then hopefully we're seeing um an increase in DUI court so that we are addressing the underlying issue on the other end of it. So love to see, maybe at some point you could, you know, take a look at those numbers and see, see if there's any difference.
Yeah, just keep in mind for court, and this is, I I don't want to speak for the prosecutor, but what you're finding is the lab is still so far behind on blood vial cases. So in incidents where um people are not providing a breath sample, what you're. um, people are not providing a breath sample, what you're finding is that charges are not being filed. The prosecutor is reserving that ability to file charges at a later date, um, because we were having issues with speedy trial where prosecutors were bumping up against timeframes, um, you know. And then the, the, the suspects were pushing forward with speedy trial, and then the prosecutor's going to trial with no blood vials, no evidence. So you might see for those ones who refuse to provide their blood sample, yeah, their license got suspended immediately for refusing. Um, but the prosecutor probably has not filed, officially filed charges on those cases. Um, saw that in both of my, my collisions on duty. Um, both were DUI, but neither one of them had charges filed immediately because they wanted to wait for blood to come back.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, let's go to the next item which involves the sheriff, also involves information technology. We're back to the um, seven uh, IT item, TCSO Axon contract ownership transfer. I don't know. Got anything to say there?
It's instructive.
I'll sit and look pretty.
All right.
Hi, Sherry Elg, IT Director. Uh, our initial agreement um, with Axon was signed, was executed by Central Services because they had collected the money for the replacement of the tasers and the cameras. Um, and now that the purchase is complete, it's a ten-year contract, and we're requesting that the contract be uh, transferred to IT so that we can manage it for the next nine years.
Questions for Sherry on that? Sounds like it's uh, something you guys need.
Good work.
Thank you. He didn't even know.
I did.
Thank you.
All right, uh, perfect. That takes us to Public Works interlocal agreement with Evergreen State College for sale of anti-icing material for road operations.
And Sheriff, after this, the clerk has.
I, I, I said, state college in the same state.
The clerk has a item she wants to update the board.
All right.
Mr. Karen Wies.
Anti-icing.
Anti-icing. Starting to be that time of year. Um, so you have seen these before. This is approval of an interlocal agreement with Evergreen State College in this case to allow for the purchase of anti-icing or brine uh, materials for a term of five years. Um, the, the brine is produced by Road Operations to support our emergency uh, winter operations needs and contention on the supply of the brine. It can be uh, made available for purchase by neighboring jurisdictions. We currently have eight others of these ILAs in place. Questions?
I'm having a flashback because one time on Evergreen, in, on Evergreen campus, uh, was with, coming back from my son from a baseball thing and we hit black ice and spun around and ended up on the median.
They need this.
You could have better vote, yes. Yeah, it's an anti-icing material.
And ice during baseball season.
Well, it was a, yeah, it was, uh, it was a, like a, an off-season workout. There was a facility in Centrelia, indoor facility. We were driving back and I remember my son, like scared me just cuz my kid, he was little. He was like a little eater, like eight or nine, but it's scary to it's always icy and everything, the trees keep it shadowed and it, there can be ice there when there's ice nowhere else. Anyway, awesome. Any questions on this side? All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, you had something?
Yes, there's just an additional public hearing that we'd like to address after the Public Works Public Hearing item on the agenda.
Oh, okay. So uh, we'll have public comment, Commissioner Ford, and then three-thirty public hearing. This is next week on proposed updates to the solid waste charges.
Yes, so that's public hearing to accept public comment. Those changes to Thurston County Code, Chapter fifteen fourteen for solid waste charges. Um, this, these will uh, revisions to our uh, charge customer terms, which are primarily businesses and organizations. They'll revise dates for assessing delinquent penalties from sixty days to thirty days, and it'll expedite um, notice and action for prohibiting disposal at our facilities for overdue accounts from ninety days to sixty days. These um, changes are intended to improve our financial uh, practices in alignment with our county financial policy um, and will reduce financial risk and accelerate payment for services.
Other questions for carrying on item, of work, uh, the public hearing item? Okay, thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Madam Clerk, you have something additional?
Yes, thank you. Uh, one item that will be added to the agenda is um, a public hearing for Public Health and Social Services for the five-year homeless housing plan. We're working with the department to get an AIS loaded, so it will be on the agenda next.
It'll be a public hearing next week.
Yes, apologies. We thought we clicked send on the AIS and we realized when we saw the agenda, it was not on there. So that's why for the last minute add.
Anything notable about this, Tom?
So you did set the public hearing on September, at your September sixteenth meeting. Um, the five-year plan, we gave you a board briefing in August about this. The plan has been out for public comments since September nineteenth. Um, so at this um, public hearing will just be accepting comments. You're not gonna be asked to approve the plan based on the public comment. We'll go back and finalize the plan. We'll also be taking it to the Regional Housing Council at the November meeting. And then we'll be bringing back to you a final plan in December um, for your final approval. So this is just to accept public comment um, on the housing plan. This is a requirement of the Department of Commerce um, for the funding we received from that.
Questions for Tom? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That'll be added for a second public hearing next week. All right, next up is advisory boards. I see a slew of new recommended uh, appointments for open positions. Um.
Yeah, we've received a few applications and recommendations back. So uh, first, starting with the Historic Commission, we have received um, a recommendation from the Historic Commission to appoint Lor, Lori Atrope and Heather Sun. Both are eligible and if appointed would serve four-year terms. And um, the Historic Commission often has several vacancies, so this really helps boost their current membership.
Who's from here?
I don't have any um, comments on, I'm okay with moving both for commission appointments, but um, you know, in conversations that I've had with the chair, um, they're one of the things they would like to see in the Historic Commission is bringing in younger um, younger members, uh, especially um, to kind of get them engaged in Thurston County's history. And so um, I know that looking at kind of the different alternate positions, I'm wondering if the board would be interested, and I'm not sure what the process would be. Um, I know we would have to make some changes. We did, we did last time when we uh, went through the board one. Um, instead of having some of those alternate to uh, instead have, change them to youth positions?
Commissioner, I've had some of the same conversations with the Chair of the Historic Commission, and I'm not sure under the what age frame he's referring to when he says younger.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's youth positions. Yeah, it's.
I wasn't sure if it was twenty, thirty, forties or youth.
He was, um, you know, he mentioned kind of both, really, um, cuz I kind of dug into it with him, right? He would like to see younger uh, participants just to kind of help with the uh, moving of the uh, the brewery uh, compact and like to help uh, he said, with kind of that assistance. But he would like to have youth voices join as well. Um, and so.
So.
My sorry, I was just gonna say my proposal would be for the alternate positions of fourteen and fifteen to be switched over to youth positions.
Is it, is an alternate position like a stand-in for when uh, a seated person is not there? Is that what the alternate means? So we would be creating additional, like seated positions as opposed to alternate positions?
And that's kind of where I was like, I, I'm not sure what the um, Josh, I'm looking, when we changed the cuz we went through this where we kind of changed the framing of the Historic Commission, um, what process was that followed? That we followed on that? Cuz it was when we expanded through commission, like from three to five, we went through all these different commissions and we had to redo their, uh, I'm not sure if it was their seat assignment or how it worked.
Yeah, we did a rolling update through Jeremy Davis, if you're recalling.
Yeah.
To answer the question, I think Commissioner Poneer is asking is alternates would still be expected to attend the meetings.
But they don't vote.
But they don't.
Typically, so you would be converting these to voting positions, is what I'm hearing?
To the board.
Yeah, I would, I would like to.
What if, if we were to work um, offline with Commissioner? If the board gives a direction, we can work offline with Commissioner, yeah, and the clerk and.
See that.
Have my proposal on the board?
Fine with me. I mean, to have people that are I think it's an alternate world where you have so, so, such competitive and well-staffed that you're gonna have alternates there, like ready. You can't vote, but attend. I mean, that's just not really how it works, so I'm not even sure of the utility of the alternate positions, but having two of them with votes and still have two alternate positions is, I would think, totally adequate.
Maybe that's where in our conversations offline, it being an alternate is not really appealing. So to get younger folks involved, they may be voting members, but we can kick around and come up with something that we can back.
Any other thoughts or questions on that one? Are there? So we've got also treatment sales tax represented or recommendation?
Can we give clear, clearer direction to the county manager on the, on the previous one that way?
The direction to look at the process for converting to alternatives to youth seats?
Correct, sir.
Okay, I have a thumbs up on that. Three thumbs here. Commissioner Claus for Grant? All right, I see. All right, I see five thumbs. Clear direction to the county manager.
Thank you.
Let's look at treatment sales tax.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Lund has applied for the treatment sales tax and has been recommended by the Advisory Committee. And you may recall him from the Timberland Regional Library Board of Trustees interviews that we held um, earlier this year in the springtime in which the board recommended that he uh, apply for TST.
Yeah, he uh, he's on the uh, jail modernization task force with me, and I, I think he'd be an absolutely great candidate for the committee. Any concern on putting Mr. Lund forward? Okay? I think we have consensus there.
Thank you.
And we have two Veterans Advisory Board.
Yes, Jeremy Chenford and Rhonda Sutton have applied and are recommended by the Veterans Advisory Board um, be appointed, and if appointed, they would serve uh, three-year terms.
Are we ready to move on those? Everybody, one more time, thumb up. I have a thumb up. Three thumbs, four thumbs. All right, so we've got, all five of those can be.
We add it to next week's agenda.
Perfect.
Thank you.
All right. Brings us to Department of Commerce Low Income Housing Institute follow-up.
Yep, we're going to call Fryhite and Tom. Here. We shared the letter with um, Commerce shortly after we received it, but there was a part in, I think it's the second to last paragraph, or maybe the third paragraph to the end that talks about um, adjusting funding to um, to the uh, to the Maple Court project. See, it's one, two, three, four, five, fifth paragraph to the end. Um, that I asked Tom to reach out to Commerce just to seek some clarification. Uh, and he did that, so I thought it'd be good just to report back to the board. Since this was a combined effort with our cities, this letter, or this this was a response to our letter, asking for them to readjust the uh, funding allocations that they made back to what, or close to what the um, regional housing council, there it is. I was gonna say complex, Regional Housing Council uh, put forward. They were, they did that, but we are still working through our uh, contract with Maple Court, and we can provide even some uh, updates on that at the same time. But I think we'll start with, Tom, can you just clarify what Commerce meant in their note on the letter about the funding?
Yeah, um, so have they received this email?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so I think, you know, I would say Commerce is still a little vague in their language um, in terms of how they're proceeding this, but um, I think they're taking a wait-and-see approach with Maple Court in terms of is the county able successfully negotiate a contract um, and move forward with Maple Court. Um, Commerce has indicated that they're committed to seeing that Maple Court is sufficiently funded um, for its operations. And I think they're gonna be looking to see if with the current contract and the level of funding that um, services are delivered at a satisfactory level. And if not, um, I think we can expect in the future, we've identified funding for both the Quinn Street um, and Unity Commons projects. I think Commerce, if they do not believe there's adequate funding um, for Maple Court, would look to redirect some other ERP funds to ensure um, additional funding for, for Maple Court. Um, is how I interpreted their letter.
And the reason we're flagging that is because they purposely put that in their letter, so it's something that we need to be aware of. On the other side, um, Public Health is doing a great job of working through a new contract with Lehigh or the services at Maple Court that have more clarity and expectations built in based, and it's more of a performance-based contract. Our goal is to have that signed by the end of October. I will say that there are a lot of questions Lehigh has about the conditions that the county is putting in place that, that Steph uh, and I support. We feel strongly that need to be in there in order to form Maple Court to operate successfully. I appreciate the hard work of Tom and Jen who have worked with our partners in the city of Lacey and Olympia to help us understand what does s- a successful operation at Maple Court look like? Um, the impact to those conversations and Lehigh's anticipated funding level was greater than after the cities asked for those dollars to be put back to the recommendation of the Regional Housing Council is that's where the back and forth is taking place. They believe that they can accomplish less, have less available rooms open. Um, and we're working that through right now, what that understanding is and how they need to approach the service so that Maple Court is successful in taking some of the most vulnerable folks, housing them, and then working with them uh, constructively and positively to move them along in the continuum of care for housing. And there have been some concerns expressed from our our stakeholders and our partners about that not taking place and um, the case management lacking in its application. And so Lehigh is expressing the need for a lot more funding in order to do all of that. And we believe that there's some things that can be accomplished in between, and so we're working through. I'll just look to Tom and Jen. Please fill in any gaps. Josh, you've also been in some conversations. Feel free to fill in any gaps.
Yeah, I would just say, um, still in those negotiations, part of the issue is that they were funded this basic amount to open all of the units. And now uh, with the additional stipulations we've put in there, they are stating they cannot open all of the units. And so we are firm that we feel many of the units can be open. We're looking at what is it, what is the magic number of affordability and um, with all the other things that were included in the statement of work.
I think what I'd say is uh, provide appreciation to the Public Health Team, OHOP, uh, Office of Housing and Homes Prevention in terms of their, they've become the focal point of trying to balance a number of stakeholders' concerns, frustrations um, and outputs. So you've got Lacey and Department of Commerce, and you have Lehigh. And I think what's really been beneficial is highlighting the expectations, setting clear expectations for the service provider, that if the service provider at Lehigh is able to um, meet the expectations, then their capacity should also improve for the number of rooms that they can utilize. And that's really the crux of the work that's happening with the statement of work, uh, the contract as it's referred to. So thank you to the appreciation. Thank you for the hard work of um, Public Health. We're not a hundred percent sure about what the outcome of Lehigh is going to be. They have uh, continued to go back and forth on the statement of work. They've continued to say that with the higher expectations, that they need more money, or they want to be able to have the same number of rooms available. And all of those things, we think that if they were able to improve the level of service, that they could meet that capacity. And so that's kind of the place that we're at right now, is going back and forth with that. And again, the work that your Public Health Team has done to have that conversation in a clear and daylighted fashion, that when it becomes necessary to have a potential next conversation, that we have that documentation. So really appreciate the work. That when it becomes necessary to have a potential next conversation, that we have that documentation, so really appreciate the work that's gone into that.
Yeah, and just to lay out how the stakeholders are interacting, we appreciate Commerce's funding. We have Lacey who's permitting some of the construction and ref- refurbishing of uh, Maple Court. Lacey has come to the county to express concerns at the operational uh, and service level that's taking place. At Lehigh and some of the um, in the lack of what they believe is successful service, some of the um. Negative side effects that that's having on their business community. We have Olympia that's working in partnership with um, Public Health, who's working to uh. Through some of their encampment closures and um, all right, we appreciate city staff for informing us. And we will continue to keep you all informed of that, so there is a natural look to Maple Court to say, well, how many units do you have available? And we just need to activate all those units, and our approach is, yes, we do, but we need them to be serviced appropriately. So that we don't create unsafe and problematic conditions for new people to enter in. And so um, that's what we've been working on, on the background, we appreciate City of Lacey, who's been very clear in their communication. Um, and the city manager, Rick Walk, is working with his police department on understanding how to provide support. When there's acts of violence or different things that are taking place, that Maple Court staff have expressed concerns about. Um, and then also working with the timing of Olympia as they're working with foreseeable creek encampment. And then are gonna be looking at the jungle encampment in the, in the foreseeable future to work that through. We're trying to work with Lehigh to get them to a place where um, they're ready to operate effectively. And we know how many units they can actually operate, but I agree with Josh that we still have some work to do. Because there's, this is a change in this performance contract, that Lehigh hasn't experienced this before. We believe it's the best way to do business because it clearly articulates what is expected of them upfront, rather than having vague language. And then there'd be a lot of finger pointing about when things aren't um, realized. And all of this is with the spirit of, we want the best for folks who are exiting encampments or exiting um. Houselessness into successful operated um, uh, units. That then are providing the service levels that they need for them to move and, and grow as people. A lot going on in the background, so I appreciate, I understand why that didn't get hit send. Because you are balancing so much communication and interactions, I think you've probably have had four meetings with Lehigh, meetings with Commerce. So that's where we're trying to balance all of this out, because we don't want it to become a situation where it looks like the county or a city is not being responsive.
So, reading this letter and, and going back to advocacy we did where we were kind of like. Giving us this much money, putting it towards something that, you know, needs some hot work, you know, meanwhile, these other projects are gonna be left unfunded. And we were successful, and, but this letter is very clear that like, their, Maple Court's gonna get funded. And so I guess my question, and I understand, you know, trying to work out the operations and. Put us in a position where we're confident about Maple Court as a good project, but then it still seems like there are dollars missing, right? Like, like, so Maple Court, you got figured all out, and then that's where the money goes, then we're still left with shortfalls at. Unity Commons and Quinn Street, whatever the ones that we were trying to backfill with this year's dollars. And the, the, the message was, give us a year to figure out, because it was a reduced level of funding, right? Even though we got funding, we was somewhat reduced, so the message was, give us at least a year to, to figure out how to transition. So I'm just wondering how that, like, how, how are we gonna solve that problem ultimately, or what are we gonna do about? We, what are we gonna do about Unity Commons and Quinn Street and the ones that got reduced funding for the next year?
Yeah, it's a good question, um, and I think the Regional Housing Council is. Has, has got that on their mind too of, you know, there's Unity Commons and there's Quinn Street, and there's kind of more broadly our system. We've seen a reduction of funding, um, especially also anticipated reduction in federal funding that's coming into our county for formal services, so.
The local home fund is probably the only source or most likely the best source.
So what I would say is, I really appreciate the county manager, because that's exactly why we're having this conversation, is to flag the community that. No, even if we have all the best uh, outcomes with Maple Court, that Commerce has made this statement. So this is the starting, the green flag that says, we need to figure out how to mitigate whatever happens next.
And, and the reality being that if Commerce wouldn't have. Uh, we're really appreciative of Commerce listening to the local perspective. If they hadn't, and those other projects would have been unfunded, then we have a decrease in our capacity. Um, to service folks, and folks who are currently getting service or not. So we are struggling through the reality of there are more needs than there are dollars. And I think as Tom mentioned, it, it, I know that this is a conversation that will be coming front and center. Um, to, with the Regional Housing Council and the jurisdictions, because I think, I know all of us are facing a tightening of resources. And with what's happening at the federal level with HUD dollars, we could potentially be seeing those impacted. Which will mean we have less dollars to spread around. This is a, a lot of what the board signaled in early this year. That we had to batten down the hatches and start looking at what a contingency plan looks like. So we're circling back to you that that note in their letter is pretty clear, that they intend to fund Maple Court. Great for Maple Court, that's why I think a, a performance-based contract is, is much needed, because if they receive more funding. We need to make sure that they're operating in a way that the region needs. That performance-based contract, we have shared it um, with the city of Lacey, as they are a direct partner in how. If it's successful, it, it matters to them as a city, it matters to everybody, but, but they have a direct impact in, in their city. Um, and so they provide a lot of great comments to that, but we are gonna have to wrestle through. If Commerce shifts the funding and some of these other projects, Chair, don't get funded, what will the recommendations be? Um, and how do we avoid folks having to exit that are housed today into a situation where they're not housed?
Uh, uh, I, I've said it a hundred times, I think, but I, you know, we, you, you'd said potential loss of federal funding. I think we should all but consider certain loss, you know, like the, the, I don't. You know, I, I, I think that that faucet is gonna be shut off to the best of its, the best of their ability. And we need to be preparing the best we can to take care of ourselves, so like, whatever that, I don't even know what that looks like, but. We gotta figure it out.
So there's no action here, we're just flagging it for your awareness to have, make sure we are, this letter was sent out a while ago. And it was um, in an environment where we were, we were excited that Commerce shifted the funding. But a couple of months later, we're also looking at. Where Commerce has indicated clearly they plan to go either next year or before the year's out. And you know, what they see is um, important from their priorities. And I think uh, you know, what we want Tom to do in the Regional Housing Council is to continue that conversation about. What's the region's plan, we're allocating these resources?
Yeah, that's the one to get caught flat-footed, I mean, if it's, if we clearly don't have enough money for all the things. And we wanna prioritize, let's just say Unity Commons and Quinn Street, those are the two that are top of my mind. And that means other things aren't gonna, other things down the chain are gonna be shifted. Like, that needs to be thought through and kind of prepared for, so we don't get caught like, at the last minute with the two most important projects. We're having a hole and we haven't thought through the way the shifts would have to, would have to backfill that, lo- with local dollars.
Yes.
Uh, and what that would look like. Or, we did get caught flat-footed because of the eleventh hour change, and that's why we went and said, don't do that. We can't say that again, because now we can see it coming, and we need to.
Go to the letter.
Yeah.
Nor, nor do I, we want the RHC going some track that does not align with our funding priorities. And then we get some recommendation, suite of recommendations from them that don't make any sense for, you know, our, our budget. And then we have to thumbs down something.
Okay, good update, uh, anything else on this item for today?
No.
Okay, last time's Commissioner items, we have a Commissioner's check-in scheduled at eleven, so is there anything we need to address before? Close this meeting, okay, then we are at the end of today's agenda setting, agenda, we're adjourned. See Commissioners back at eleven for what I imagine would be a fairly brief, I know Commissioners Grant and Hornier have pretty hard stops, so. See you guys back at eleven.